All right, call to order the submitting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the role to reestablish quorum?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Kennedy. And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
So we still have our consent matters. Items one through 47. I do need a motion to drop item 21. It's the authority to execute a retroactive revenue contract with the California Department of Healthcare Services to accept Sacramento County's annual substance abuse and mental health services administration community mental health services block grant.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to continue. Please vote. Or drop.
The unanimous vote. That concludes my clerk notes.
Okay, is there any members of the board that has any questions? Would like Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Peters, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. I think Mr. Gill has something too, but the, just give me a moment. On item 16, if I could have you call that out for a second, please.
Okay. Item 16 is the retroactive authority to apply for funding in the amount of $527,280 from the California Department of Social Services from the HomeSafe program.
Yes, thank you, and I've had a chance to talk with Mr. Gill and be briefed on this by Bruce Weigstapp, Michelle Caíes, but I did want to point out on this item that I still think it warrants some further discussion, as I had brought up in budget hearings last year, that the HomeSafe program, and I'm glad to see we're applying for this and actually will be hopefully receiving the money, and it's a dollar-for-dollar match. I also have the opinion, though, that beyond some of the services that are embodied in the HomeSafe approach here for some of the more frail and elderly folks in our community, that the number of turnaways at the current safe house, that number is a bit alarming to me, that we served some 91 guests last year, and that we rarely have space available in the current safe house, and that we turn on any given day maybe one or two people. A number of them can be served under this grant, but I do believe we need to have a broader discussion about, you know, either another facility and/or at least have, I think, a good understanding beyond what has been described in the staff report in a few pages as relates to, you know, providing vouchers and, you know, some temporary but hopefully some long-term solution sets for folks who are, you know, subject to neglect, abuse of different types, and in a very vulnerable situation. So I know I talked with you, Mr. Gill, about that, and again, I'm very appreciative of this effort, but I'm not quite sure that it goes far enough, at least from the standpoint of having conversation, and I'm encouraged, but I still would like to have us have some more discussion about this beyond just the item here today.
And we do plan on having those discussions as soon as January 31st, when we have our board retreat, we're going to discuss a little bit more in depth about seniors and what kind of programs we have for them.
Okay, and if I could just say that we anticipate we would have this money by July of this calendar year. It would seem to me that some reports then as to if we do see a market decline in the number of turnaways from the safe house, or if we see other issues that arise, and maybe we'll have more time to talk about that at the retreat, but I, again, I'm encouraged, but I'd like to see us do more if possible. Right, thanks.
If I may, Supervisor, thank you for your comments, and I appreciate that very much. As you know, we're very concerned about housing issues related to seniors and what we can do with this funding, but just to remind the board that this fits into our overall homelessness effort with the HEEP funding, we're going to be talking with you about No Place Like Home at your next meeting, the homeless plan that you approved a while back, all of those things come together. This is one piece of that overall effort, and also, the governor has made it very clear that he's intending to provide more money in this regard. So with all of that, it is our intent to be very focused on the needs of seniors among all the others that we have to address, but certainly the needs of seniors, and we hope we can make a real difference with all those resources. But thank you.
Bruce, if I just could on that, because I think that, you know, with the various initiatives that we have underway, as you pointed out, certainly homelessness is an element of this, but I think neglect, self-neglect, you know, the exploitation and financial abuses, again, we have a number of initiatives. I think maybe kind of seeing what the full package looks like in this county, who our partners are, both in county, in the county household, but also maybe in the community. And if we have gaps, identify those. Again, we may not be able to fill all those, but it just seems to me when we have a stationary location that we know we're, on any given day, if a call comes in today, if we're full, then we turn somebody away, then maybe get some other reference and/or other help somewhere else. I just think that needs to be something that we really put some additional focus on. So again, I think it's important, this is part of an overall, but I kind of want to know how, better how it fits, and, you know, where we have those gaps, if we still have a gap, which I trust we will, so.
Correct, I mean, that's what we plan on doing.
Okay, thank you, thanks. That's all I have.
I don't need it right into the record, but I just want to question, quick question, Mr. Penrose, on number 37, the power in improvements. Do you have a rough idea of when that work will commence? Season 2020. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we have no other questions or comments.
What's consent?
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Supervisor Kennedy, if I could.
It's Chair Kennedy, by the way.
Excuse me, Chair Kennedy.
I thought that was President Kennedy last night.
My mistake, Chair Kennedy. I would like to take a moment to introduce our brand-new regional parks director, Elizabeth Ballas. She's been with the county for 20 years. She's here today, and I would like for her to come in and address the board.
Great.
First and foremost, I would like to thank my husband, Cliff, and my family. Their support has been invaluable to me, and without them, I would not be here today. I would also, of course, like to thank your board, the county executive, Mr. Gill, county executive staff, Ms. Newton, Mr. Leonard, for affording me this opportunity to serve our county and the community in the roles of, in the role of Parks Director. It is truly an honor. I would be remiss not to recognize the amazing staff that we have working in our Parks Department. They work very hard to make our parks and programs successful, and I truly appreciate all of their hard work and dedication. Lastly, I'd like to thank my friends and fellow colleagues. They've taught me so much along the way. I'd like to recognize former Parks Director Ron Suter. He's to blame, he actually hired me here first. I'm very excited to lead the department, and I look forward to a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, we do have a couple of off-agenda items, a couple of cards that I'd like to call now so that they don't sit through the rest of the meeting, so we'll start with Betty Wyland. Or Betsy, I'm sorry.
Could we please start with Kathy Keaner?
We can start with Kathy Keaner.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you very much for hearing me out. I am a member of Save the American River Parkway, and Friends of the River, and Friends of Sutter's Landing. I am here to let you know that I'm a very passionate Parkway user and photographer of the Parkway, and I just want to express my concerns and basically my upset and distress over the slaughter of so many trees and shrubs along the Parkway by PG&E. My main concern is the loss of nesting trees for raptors and habitat for the wildlife. My question actually is, who in the county is overseeing what should or should not be cut down in, along our American River Parkway? I realize that PG&E has to maintain their towers, but I have been out to the Parkway, and I have pictures to show the devastation, basically. And I also want to mention that when there's a controlled burn, Mary Murray would go out before the burn would take place, and she would mark areas where nesting animals, birds, and all that stuff are located, and I'm hoping that in the future, when WAPA and SMUD take over to start cutting trees, that the county would also send her out to take a look at that. So I just wanted to express my concern about that, and I do have pictures to show. Can I put this? Do I just put it down right here?
No, no, the other way, the other way. There you go.
That is, all these pictures are taken at the 8.5 mile marker. Okay, this was taken from the Howe Avenue Bridge, showing the 8.5 mile marker area. If you can hear me or not, here's another one.
Other way, there you go. Other way.
Keep going.
And here we go. And this particular, these two photos really struck me. I was out before the trees were cut, and this is what I believe to be a black oak, I mean, a black walnut tree, a very stately tree. I want to say it's a heritage tree. This was removed, it had a blue dot on it, and this is the aftermath. I just ask again that the county would please step in, and when WAPA takes over, when SMUD comes in, please sit down with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy.
My name is Betsy Wyland, and I'm with Save the American River Association, and I'm going to be addressing you on the same topic, PG&E's work, if you can call it that, and the American River Parkway. I have packets for the supervisors that I'd like to give each one of you, as well as, I've already given one to the clerk of the board, because you can follow along with your packet.
Betsy, keep in mind you have two minutes.
Yes, okay. So, we, basically this. The PG has been working in the Parkway since October. We have been trying to communicate with PG&E since September. We've had, you'll see in your packet there, tons of documentation, more pictures, concerns with their work, even though they do have easements, and we have gotten no cooperation to date. We've got no documentation of any significance to date, and any reply has just come, January 7th, and that was only through an attorney's effort. So my request to the board, the devastation, I hope the picture, the pictures can't even describe really what's going on out there with PG&E and their work. So our request to the board is this, is that the board agendize sometime, in either a Tuesday or Wednesday board meeting, to bring PG&E into the room and have them explain to you how they've complied with the public resources codes, with required permitting, et cetera, et cetera, the American River Parkway plan, when they developed this work plan.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and congratulations to the reelection of our new, our supervisors. Good luck this year.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, Ms. Chair, I appreciate this is off agenda, so again, I'll keep my comments pretty brief, but I do, it seems to me, we were given some notice on this, and I, the issues regarding permitting and such, if in fact they get passes on those because of other public safety requirements within rights of way or easements, not as much rights of way as easements, then I think it needs to be clearly understood, and I know there have been others in the organization, obviously, have been tracking this fairly closely. I do think it warrants a broader discussion by this board about the Parkway and the various elements thereof, and it seems to me that, you know, certain cutting and clearing can be done with more precision. You know, if one gets a chainsaw out, it doesn't mean you have to cut the whole tree down necessarily, and, you know, as far as other habitat that may be disturbed, that may either be protected. We've done mitigation in our Parkway over the years, maybe not in this particular location, for other endangered species, certainly for flora and fauna, and it would seem to me that, again, you know, what's been done, obviously, is not, you're not going to, we're not going to do anything about that immediately, but not just PG&E, but I think for the purposes of this board, for the community we represent, that we ought to have a broader understanding, but also, I think, a discussion, because as was mentioned by the speakers, there are other easements there and obligations that go with those easements, and I understand public safety concerns regarding fire, but it seems to me that the Parkway doesn't need to be totally compromised in those areas. Maybe there's a better plan, at least there's a good understanding, that there's a walkthrough with, it mentioned the Mary Murray and others, a company, and maybe that was done, I don't know, but I think this, for a future agenda in not-too-distant future, makes a good, makes good sense to me. Thanks.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I too am aware that this is off agenda, so I will also keep my comments to a minimum, but I agree with Don Natoli about the need for a informational item before this board on the subject. I would just note, too, that things are obviously moving very quickly when it comes to Pacific Gas and Electric. We just, the public just learned yesterday that they're filing Chapter 11 to reorganize and hopefully stabilize their business platform, but I think in addition to what we might gain from having a public information item before this board that spells out, at least for the public and for concerned advocacy groups, the means, the process, and the individuals to whom grievances should be addressed, and how that occurs, we should also note that as things continue to change relative to PG&E, and perhaps even the breakup into smaller utilities, which is, I understand, is one option, we're going to want to understand as a county how those parties will continue to communicate clearly with this county about their responsibilities in the Parkway, not just in terms of clearance of trees, but as it relates to overall management of those easements.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Item number 50.
Item number 50 is the presentation of resolution recognizing and honoring the Rio Linda High School California Interscholastic Federation, Division 5 AA Football State Champions.
Supervisor Frost.
Thank you. I would like to invite the team and the coaches. If the coaches could meet me at the podium, and the team, maybe if you could come down into this circle area facing the audience, we'll present the resolution.
Yeah, Paul, Paul has been back.
You're going to face it that way.
Did y'all get enough to eat?
Yeah, enjoy breakfast.
You always forget how big football players are.
You guys can back up, too.
Number 72, you can back up.
If we can. Oh, boy. Maybe that was a bad decision. There's not enough room, is there? Maybe we should put him back in the seats and take the picture from the seat.
This is fine.
Is this okay?
Yeah, you look great, Supervisor Frost.
Oh, you can see me, huh?
Go deep and wide.
See, my resolution and my certificates are missing. So, this must be Mr. Jack Garceau, our coach?
Yes.
And we have several of the other coaches. I know there were other coaches involved in the success of this team, and I thought this morning, what we would do is, we will present the certificates. We have a certificate for each one of the team members, and I'll just hand these to you and let you present them afterward. And I wanted to read the resolution, because there's a lot of really good information about the history of Rio Linda High School in here, and I have a few, couple words, and then I thought maybe you could introduce the coaches and say a couple words, and then we'll get a photo afterwards.
Sounds good.
So, this is a very exciting moment for all of us in Sacramento County, and I know on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we're all very excited to present this resolution to, in honor of your achievement, and so, the Rio Linda High School 2018 CIF Division 5 Double-A Football State Champions, something to celebrate. So, whereas the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors commend rare athletic achievement and give special honor and commendation to those athletic teams who pursue such excellence that they become examples to the entire Sacramento County. Whereas Rio Linda High School opened its doors in 1962, and the football program was started that fall semester. Rio Linda High School Knights have won several division championships. In 2004, they were CIF, SJF, Division 3, and they also won CBC Champions in 1997, 98, 2000, 2004, 2005, 2006, and 2013. So they have a history of success, but then in, on December 15th, 2018, Rio Linda High School Knights achieved their highest title, and they defeated the powerful San Gorgonio High School in a hard-fought game to win the CIF Division 5 State Championship.
Now you can clap.
In that game, the Rio Linda Knights were leading at the half, 21 to 7, and ultimately won by a score of 38 to 35, so you know they had to fight hard to win. And whereas, the win capped an amazing season for the Rio Linda High School, as they finished with a season record of 13 wins against only two losses. And whereas, the achievements of Rio Linda High School football team and its head coach, Jack Garceau, and of its talented coaching staff deserve recognition and have earned the rightful place in, at the top of their sport for their very impressive 2018 season, and for the example that they've set for Sacramento County. And it goes on to finish the resolution, which I won't read, but I did want to say a couple things. This is the first state championship of any sport for Rio Linda High School, and during this game, 397 yards in one game for Scatabo is a record for state championship games, I believe. Right? Where's Scatabo? Raise your hand, Cameron. Oh, Cameron. Okay, and I want to point out that when people approached this young gentleman and asked him about those runs, he gave credit to his team for blocking and guarding and helping him get there, which was really great. He showed he was, that, this showed that this is a great team. This achievement would not have been possible without the great leadership and commitment from the players and the coaches. You can have a lot of skill and talent in a team, but if you don't have the leadership at the top to pull it together, to teach players how to respect each other, and how to work together for a common goal, an achievement like this is not possible. I want to commend the coaching staff for your accomplishment and your leadership. Teamwork is a formula for success. It transcends football and extends into all facets of life: family, workplace, community, military. I also want you to know that even my husband bought one of your T-shirts, because he can't wait to wear it to the next Rio Linda event that we go to. So you are impacting people that reach outside of Rio Linda, and all this may have started in Rio Linda at the football field, but it won't end there. Your experience epitomizes what we are in America, the land of opportunity, an opportunity to compete, and even though you don't always win, there's that opportunity to try. As each of these players move into their life, to their jobs, to their families, whether they're starting their own company or working somewhat for someone else, they will always remember back on that mutual respect and working together, and how it can lead to great expectations and accomplishments. This was also a lasting gift for our community. We all came out at the last minute to have a parade to celebrate them, and businesses volunteered and brought hot dogs for free for everyone. And so I want this team, I want you all to know, that the community of Rio Linda will always remember back on you. Even though you're going to grow up and move on, Rio Linda will never forget 2018 and that championship, and they will never forget you. So I want to congratulate the coaches and the entire team for your accomplishment. And now, I would like to invite Jack Garceau to say a couple words and introduce the coaches, and then we'll take a picture.
We want to thank the board for inviting us today, and very excited for our program and our school and our community, especially our young men, and they worked very, very hard for this. We have four, three coaches that came with me today. Coach Clint Baer is our offensive line coach. Coach Will Horn is one of our freshman coaches, and then Coach Negri is a, pretty much a walking encyclopedia, knows everything about football in the Sacramento area, and we even walked in here today, and he knew, he coached one of the board members, I don't know, about three or four years ago over at Foothill High School, so. No, we are, we're very fortunate to have a great season. Just so you guys know, this team went through the longest football season, I think, in the history of the United States, and that is not a joke. They played 15 games, and we had three bye weeks, one of them because of the campfire, unfortunately, so that's 18 weeks of actual season time, and then there was three weeks of practice before that, and the fact that they were able to prepare their bodies and their minds and everything to get through that kind of a grind is pretty amazing. Along the way, we had the section and the Northern California all-time leading rusher is now from our program, that's Cameron Scataboo, and just, this team also broke, I think it was 17 school records along the way. So it was a tremendous journey, and we appreciate everybody recognizing the things that we have done, and we look forward to another year.
So the other coaches don't want to say anything, so I guess, we do know that one of these coaches knows Supervisor Peters was a coach when Supervisor Peters was in high school. Is that correct?
Five years ago.
That's me.
That's exciting.
He was a lot younger then.
It was good to see you again, Suzie. You still, you look the same as when you did in high school. Thank you.
Wow, and she lets you call her Suzie. She doesn't let us call her Suzie. Okay, so I'll present this to you, and then we will. Great job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good shape. Not only is mean as ever.
Item 51.
Item 51 is the authorization for the county to provide primary and behavioral health care services to up to 5,000 unduplicated Medi-Cal patients as a subcontractor to UC Davis, including authority to execute a continuous term revenue agreement with the Regents of University of California to provide medical and behavioral health services to eligible patients, authority to amend and increase the pooled agreement amount for expenditure agreements with the UC Regents by $100,000 to contract for additional medical services from the university, approval of an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $100,000, and approval of a salary resolution amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Billenson.
Thank you for having me. And I just wanted to note that that number five ran for 397 yards in one game. Unbelievable. I thought it was passed what he ran for. Anyway, I'm pleased to be here today to talk about a new partnership between Sacramento County and UC Davis, and a new day between the two organizations to expand access to high-quality primary care to underserved Medi-Cal patients throughout the county of Sacramento. I'm joined by Dr. Sumi Mishra, who some of you know, who's our medical director, who's done a great job at the Primary Care Center. This collaborative is based on an accountable care organization model where, in our case, UC Davis gets 5,000 patients assigned to them by Health Net, which is one of the Medicare Managed Care, Medi-Cal Managed Care Programs in Sacramento's GMC system. And for those 5,000 members, they get what's called a global budget, a certain amount of money to take care of all needs of those folks, all their health needs, behavioral health, physical health, hospitalization, emergency department, specialty care, et cetera. And we will be subcontracted as the primary care home, the Primary Care Center at 4,600 Broadway, as the primary care medical home for those 5,000 patients, which will be phased in over the next several months. The financial viability is a good thing in this case. Instead of us paying UC Davis for care, they're paying us for care. And the way that this works is twofold. Number one, they'll pay us a capitation rate of $15 per member per month, and all the members that are enrolled. So eventually, when 5,000 are enrolled, that's about $900,000 guaranteed access, guaranteed payment. And then for each visit, we'll be reimbursed at our federally qualified health center rate of about $260, of which we'll get $135 very quickly. So the bottom line is, when we expand to the 5,000 members, we bring in about $2.2 million, and the additional cost in terms of hiring UC Davis physician staff and others is about 1.3 million, leaving a $960,000 balance. We've talked with all of you before, and we are understanding of the need to sort of a risk mediation, a risk mitigation pool, if you will, of some of that $960,000. So what are the risks? Because that's obviously on people's minds, and we talked about it with folks. And I'm actually not going to do the PowerPoint presentation because it's just easier, and it's quicker. And as the president of the United, I'm sorry, chairman of the...
He's very quick on the uptake.
By the way, I, just so you know, I was in the LA Coliseum, or the LA County Sports Arena, whatever, when President Kennedy was nominated, when I was three months old, with my little Kennedy for... So anyway, there are two risks to the, two risks of this proposal. One is predominantly to UC Davis, and that is, they get a global budget to take care of all these patients, these 5,000, all their aspects of healthcare. And if it costs them more than their global budget, they are at risk for losing that. We are not at risk for that. In fact, we have potential to gain if they actually save money, if they spend less than their global budget in our contract with them, and I want to repeat that, in our contract with them. We have a shared savings on ability to share the savings in a formula to be determined, but still, we will be sharing savings with them. So that's not a risk to us. The risk to us is if we see fewer than 5,000 patients, you could say, well, what if you hired too many staff members, too many physicians to see these patients, and we didn't get 5,000 in a rapid enough manner? And the answer to that is, we can actually hire by .1 FTE UCD staff, so we can titrate to the needs for how many patients we're going to be seeing. Mr. Ferguson has pointed out to me one further risk, which I think can be mitigated as well, and that is, what if we're counting on, for example, we're counting on two visits per patient per year as a way of figuring out how many providers we need? And let's say that they actually spend much more time with their patients than we had expected, and so they're not serving quite as many. Again, we have this mitigation fund, but I would argue that we would be actually having more visits, which would pay for theirselves, than actually having longer visits and for high-acuity patients. So that's basically it. It's a person center. One of the beauties of what we've been able to do is to be able to use the available facilities at 4,600 Broadway. I'm not sure how many of you have seen it, I know most of you have seen it, but it's a beautiful $31, $32 million investment on the part of the county. And it's since the ACA has passed and since 2008 occurred, we've gone from about 20,000 to 25,000 patients to about 4,000 patients. So it's a great asset, beautiful building, that should be used for the Medi-Cal population of the county. We have a lack of access, although we have coverage, in terms of almost everyone having Medi-Cal coverage now who are indigent, we don't necessarily have access because the primary care providers in town get paid so little by Medi-Cal, as opposed to what we get as a federally qualified health center, which makes it financially viable for us. So it's the right thing to do for the community. It's a good thing that UC Davis is helping out on this one rather than the other way around, and it's good for Sacramento County citizens and Sacramento County Health Department.
Great. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Billenson, for what is obviously a lot of forethought that's gone into this initiative. I have a couple of questions. The first question is one that comes from having an in-depth conversation with our county CEO, and I'm sure you probably had a very similar one.
That Nav Gill.
That'd be Nav Gill, not the president, nor the, or the emperor, or other titles. But I think Nav rightfully brought up something very important in our briefing on this subject, and one that you and I didn't necessarily discuss during the briefing we had last week on this, and that is, you know, judging by some history that I think all of us still feel a little stung by, we want to make sure that there are going to be very frequent check-ins to monitor progress, almost at a surgically precise level. So maybe if you can speak to that, and then I'll ask my second question.
So I don't want to do surgery anymore, as you can talk, as my hand bounces so much. But we've been, we talked about it with each of you, and that is, thank you for pointing that out, I forgot, is that we will be having at least, just as we do chiefs of staff quarterly reports on our Healthy Partners Program, which is much smaller than this, or not quite as large as this, I would argue that it would be very beneficial for us and necessary for you to have us report on monthly basis for the first 12 months, and then we'll see how things are going, based on how many patients are coming in, enrolled, how much physician time we're buying, any additional costs, any additional problems, so we can identify them very quickly. And I pledge to you that we'll do that monthly, and I'll actually make the presentation, either it can be to your chiefs of staff, I presume you probably don't want me to come monthly to report in person to you, but we'll have both a written dashboard and can report to the chiefs of staff as you see fit.
And then I would assume you'd even more frequently check in with the CEO's office in kind of a less formal capacity?
Yeah, I mean Bruce and I talk daily.
So besides that, as Dr. Billenson mentioned, it's with Bruce, with Britt, staff in his department, they'll be monitoring, and then on a monthly basis, report back. I think the spirit of what those conversations, as Supervisor Serna mentioned, is that we have learned from our experience almost a decade ago that we put a program in place and we, quite frankly, failed to monitor it. And the information did not flow from the department to the executive, to budget, onto the board. And our pledge in this program with Peter, Bruce, and Britt is that we're not going to make the mistake we made 10 years ago.
That's good to hear. Second question, you just mentioned it by name, Healthy Partners. So this board last year voted to extend the level of service to a greater number of clients through our Healthy Partners Program, and we also removed the age cap, as you recall. So maybe you can speak a little bit to how this initiative will actually help the county better serve that particular population.
One of the things we'll be doing is more outreach to bring in more patients, more members of the Healthy Partners Program, because I think that's actually been lacking over the past couple of years. We can still, we still have some room to get up to the 4,000 cap, and we have a decent amount of funds, Brett hearing, to be able to pay for the specialty services that are needed for the rest of the year. One thing that you should be aware of, and you may know because of the governor's recent announcement in his budget talks, obviously it takes a while for the budget to end up being approved or things getting changed, that they're going to potentially increase the age for Medi-Cal, for undocumented folks, to 26, which may take some, not a huge proportion, but a modest proportion of our Healthy Partners patients and bring them into our, into the Medi-Cal program. And UC Davis staff, who are our main providers in addition to Dr. Mishra, already see patients outside of the Health Net group, so they'll see patients from all Medi-Cal providers.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, thank you, Dr. Billenson, for your efforts, and certainly at Bruce Wagstaff and others. I think it's been noted here, bit of a checkered history with our partner on this, but I think that going forward, to your point, I think, you know, looking, you know, to what's ahead and what we can do versus, you know, looking backwards, I do think that it's important to, you know, just as the title up there says, that this is collaborative, obviously there are fiscal elements to it, but I think that, as you also pointed out, that the opportunity to improve healthcare access for folks who, you know, are in the pool of those that will be served through the UCD element of our community that are assigned, I think that's really important. As you noted, the Primary Healthcare Center is major investment as to the physical asset. We obviously have very qualified staff, provide the services to a much more limited number of folks because of changes that have you noted. But I think this is a real opportunity to, once again, to, I think, see more people through the doors there, to hopefully improve healthcare access. And I would just note that I'd asked a similar question about the Healthy Partners Program, and the answer you gave was the same one that you responded to me with, but I do think that as we look at the fiscal outline for this, and I know that you and Nav and Britt both have, you know, stressed the fiscal piece because of, you know, some of the past history, but I think there's going to be a juncture, maybe a year out, when this board then, depending upon where we are with that, should then take a look at, one, where we are with the Healthy Partners Program, where we are with health access for specialty care, either through Primary Healthcare Center and/or through the UCD contract, and then also look at the budgetary framework after having years' experience behind this, and to see then, you know, what we might supplement, or if it's, you know, still there are other question marks, obviously you'll bring it to the board. But I'm very interested in that, and it may, again, allow us to even do more with a minimal risk, and I think that's a good thing from the standpoint of people of all ages, but certainly those that may have some difficulty in accessing the system right now, particularly for that specialty care piece of it. And so I, you know, I'm encouraged by this, and again, I know it's a bit delicate, you know, bringing it to the board, but I think it's the right thing to do, and appreciate the initiative, and I'm looking forward to this being truly successful. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Dr. Billenson. I wanted to make sure I understood correctly. You stated that the cost to us is not tied to the patient care, it is the cost to UC Davis. We would manage the admin and the cost for the physicians, and we can basically control who we bring in and maybe have a skeleton crew and have others on call, and they're willing to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're willing to add point, as little as .1 FTE at a time to titrate, in terms of buying physician care. As you all probably know, we already buy physician care, most of our physician care and nurse-partitioner care at the Primary Care Center for the 4,000 or so patients that are there are UC Davis staff. So it's actually, one of the three parts of this board action is to approve the contract, to allow the contract to expand a little bit to provide funding to UC Davis to provide more staff, and that's paid for by the revenue that comes in.
And it can expand and contract?
Yes.
As far as this...
And I should, sorry, go ahead.
And also, so an example of, say, there's a Medi-Cal patient who comes in who needs heart surgery.
That's on UC Davis.
If it costs them too mu, if the cost of care exceeds what they expected, it's on them, it's all on them, there's no later expectation for them to come back and ask us.
That's correct, but it's a global budget, it's not per patient. It's, so for example, on 5,000 patients, don't, this is not the exact amount of money they're getting, they get approximately $20 million. If the total cost is $20,100,000 for taking care of all 5,000 patients, UC Davis is out $100,000. It's not on a patient basis.
And if, if in a short period of time, they use all that money, they actually haven't, there's an escape clause on both sides for both of us?
Correct, correct.
To say, oh, this is out of control, this isn't going to work.
Correct, there's 180-day period that without, without cause, you know, whether or not there's cause, and the reason for that is there's a federal law that requires you to keep a patient on, you can't just dump a patient in a 30-day period.
And I wanted to ask, I don't know that much about Medi, is there a co-pay with Medi-Cal? Or do, and I've also, over time, in my short time as a supervisor, from time to time, someone will come in and say, oh, we don't get, our organization does not get paid quickly enough, and from our point of view, it's because the funding that's coming from whatever state organization doesn't come that quickly. Have we, are there any potential challenges relating to timing of that funding and us being expected to front money that's owed to UC Davis?
Very good question. So the beauty of the capitation fee is that that comes monthly at the beginning of every month before we even see the patient, whether or not we saw the patient. So once things are up and rolling with 5,000 members, that's $900,000 given, coming in at $84,000 a month, something like that, upfront costs, upfront payments. So we actually have less of an issue with delayed payments from Medi-Cal, although that generally comes in fairly quickly for us because we have a good billing system.
Okay. And then lastly, you said Gavin Newsom, our governor, is thinking about extending for non-citizens to 26. Do citizens have benefits?
Yeah, yeah, citizens have benefits. So Medi-Cal expansion under the Affordable Care Act, which California decided to do, expands access to care to not just parents with dependent children, but to any human being below a certain percentage of poverty level, yes. So that's already, everyone's covered under the current ACA that are citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I have no heartburn with the program, but I haven't quite gotten over the last time we dealt with UC Davis on a program that seemed too good to be true. I'm sure Mr. Nattoli remembers sitting here in those hearings and questioning staff about the program and being assured that everything was copacetic in place, it was going to work, et cetera. So I'm glad to hear that you're going to have reports back, quarterly reports back to the chiefs of staff, and that really you're reporting to Britt and Nav on a monthly basis. So if there does turn out to be a problem, we're only at risk of a month or two, hopefully. I guess, suppose that's dependent on how long it takes the records to get back to you to be checked, which is where we really fell down previously. And if I understood the staff report correctly, we, if it isn't working for us, we have a six-month exit clause?
Yep.
Okay. And...
Something egregious, there's a lesser period of time, but with or without cause, we can get out within 180 days.
Aggregious and with or without cause, and I didn't get the last part of that.
With, the six-month period is whether there's cause or not, we can just get out for whatever reason. If there's something tremendously egregious, which I can't remember the exact legal term, other than tremendously egregious, you can get out in shorter period of time, but I would argue that we should look at it 180 days as the likely time.
Okay. Well, from my standpoint, with an abundance of caution, I believe the $960,000 that we're set to reap from this program should be set aside for the length of this contract, so that if there is a glitch that we don't know about yet, we have something to back up to to help us out of it, and then staff would also have plenty of time to plan for a new program to use this money. I would suggest that it be tied up till, through the term of the contract, and then you can spend the money, and then you have another contract for five years, whatever it is, and you set the money aside for that until we are really positive that the program's working. Plus, I think it's, if you're going to start something new, you'd have more money to do it with if you set it aside. I think that's... I think that's really, really important. I didn't see that in this staff report, is it in there, and I just missed it?
No, but I would, one caveat, if I might, and that is, I think we talked about this, if we find that we need more of a fiscal oversight person dedicated to that system, to that center, that we'd be able to use some of that $960,000 for that. I think that's-
I, I, the microphone must not be working for me, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I think basically, we, what Dr. Bealenson's saying is that we just need, he would like to have access to some of that money if there's a fiscal person that's needed. If we get into that oversight, we can work with his department on that, but commented, we do, we do not plan on spending any of that money until we absolutely know that that money's there and it's verified, and we can move forward with it.
Yeah, I think it needs to be part of what we're voting on, so that we know that, that it's coming from the highest levels, that the money needs to be spent. I don't, I don't know if the board feels they would need to bring it back to this board to-
We, we would absolutely bring it back. There's no way we're going to expand or do any other program without coming back to the board and saying, this is the source of funding we have, and this is the money that we plan on using.
Okay. Well, I, I'm ready to move the program, but I want that $960,000 held in advance, and that the staff comes back to the board to discuss expenditures from that fund.
Will do.
Absolutely.
Will do.
That's my motion.
Okay. Just to get it on the table, I'll, the chair will second the motion, but we do have a couple of cards.
Oh, sorry.
Claudia Martin.
Good morning. My name is Claudia Martin, I'm project manager for Sacramento Cover. Prior to my role as project manager, I was a patient navigator at a local emergency department here in Sacramento. As a patient navigator, I assisted patients by connecting them to primary care services. Although we have great community partners, due to the high demand, we continue to have challenges, challenges connecting patients to the, to primary care doctors in a timely manner. I am here to thank you and commend the county's intention to expand access to healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorena Sanchez. Morning.
My name is Lorena Sanchez, I'm the director of programs for Sacramento Cover. We do a lot of work in the Sacramento County, connect individuals to medical dental home. In particular, we have seven navigators in local emergency departments providing connections to primary care and, for any avoidable visits. The navigators last year provided 19,000 services to about 7,800 patients in four local hospitals, and the navigators continue to have challenges in making sure that they're connected to a follow-up appointment, a timely follow-up appointment, in particular also to specialty care. So we are truly excited, and I feel that this is a step in the right direction to achieve better health outcomes here in Sacramento County, and we applaud the county's intention to expand access services here in Sacramento. So thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have. We do have a motion, and a second, does the board have any more discussion? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Well done, Dr. Bealenson, staff. Now, we have an opportunity here, we're a little ahead, so we wanted to go forward with, with appointments?
Sure.
So that would be item, do you want to go in the order of own ranks, and then we'll take nominations? Okay, so let's pull item 55. And if we could pull out your spreadsheet, we'll just walk through the spreadsheet.
By, by the way, I, I want to say, thank our clerk, this is by far the easiest to read I've seen in four years, with only two colors.
I second that.
We appreciate it.
So we're just going to focus on the items in yellow. You do need to take action for anything that is highlighted in yellow. All other matters are open for discussion at the direction of the board. So, Chairman, can I just move forward and go down the list?
It's me.
So, starting with Adult and Aging Commission, we do need to make an appointment for your, the board's designee.
I take it Howard no longer wants to-
He would like to share this experience with another chief of staff.
Would he? I'm sure he would, okay, we'll put Keaton Riley in at that position at this time.
I can hear the cheering from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, they sit in this term for one year. Then we have Area Four Agency on Aging, the governing board. These are one-year terms, so we just need to either reappoint, or if you have new appointments.
How about alternates?
That, the alternates as well.
Okay. Supervisor Natoli.
No, I don't have an alternate, I go, I tend.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
I'm very pleased with Maxine Krugman as my alternate.
Okay, I will stay with Miko Sawarura. Supervisor Peters.
Fine, it's fine.
Supervisor Frost.
I'm fine with mine.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move down to the Criminal Justice Cabinet. This is the chair or chair-designee.
I, I would like to, if the board's okay with it, remain on the Criminal Justice Cabinet.
Yes.
Supervisor Frost, alternate? Okay.
Okay. Next is the Delta Protection Commission.
Obviously Supervisor Natoli you would like to stay on?
Yes.
Yes. If anybody else would like to be alternate, otherwise I'll stay on as alternate.
Thank you, Patrick, for your, you know, work. I know you've been tracking and participating, appreciate it.
District Four is listed there, and should have been, is that a typo?
Not on my sheet.
It's on Delta Protection Commission.
Yeah.
I show Kennedy, and then I show Natoli.
It says four years.
Right, the term is-
We're, we're looking at the flow chart.
Okay, you're looking at the main one. It must be the, just the face sheet that has a typo. Never mind, it's fine, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, it does say two and four on the-
Says two and four on the letter, so it's confusing.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll correct that on the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could just follow on the spreadsheet, please. Thank you for-
That's my confusion yesterday.
That's what it was, yes, we were, so it's two and five is what it should be, right?
Right.
Correct, and I'll, and I will make the revisions for the letter and also on your final spreadsheet after today.
That makes sense.
Okay. The next one is the Law Library Board of Trustees.
Counsel, what do you want to do with this?
Normally it's county counsel.
It is, yeah, it's always been.
I would just say interim county council, stay on, and then once county council, once you choose the next county council, they can fill that spot.
Board agree?
Agree.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, we have the National Association of Counties.
I enjoy my service on-
Why is the term length only one year?
I don't know.
Anybody know?
I don't have any notes as to, I can follow up with you to give explanation as to the one-year term, but I will point out that this is really a catch-up and a correction, because the term expires 5/1/18, so we need to catch it all up.
Okay.
So we got four months left, then?
Peters.
Supervisor Peters.
Supervisor Peters, would you like to remain the alternate?
If someone liked to be alternate, I'm fine with that, but otherwise.
Okay.
Okay.
Next?
Next is the Northern California World Trade Center Board.
Deal with it.
So it's just an appointment by the chair and vice-chair seats.
Supervisor Peters, you okay?
Yeah, I'm not chair anymore, so-
Is it normally the chair?
Yeah, it's normally the chair and the vice-chair.
Okay, then-
I'm, I'm okay with breaking with tradition.
(laughing) Would you like to remain, would you like to remain as chair, or, I mean-
I've never gotten a meeting notice from them, so-
So you're complaining about the amount of time you've been putting into it?
Based on that, I, I can, I can stay, but-
Okay, let's just keep it the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So no change on that. Let's move to the Regional Human Rights Fair Housing Commission Governing Board. Your alternates must be elected officials, and the term expired December 31/18. These are one-year terms.
And we meet once or twice a year for five minutes, so I-
Looks like a good team to me.
Good leaving it the same, okay, next.
Same. Then we have the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and it looks like for Mr. Kennedy and Supervisor Frost.
And Peters.
Mine expires in 20.
Expires in, oh, okay, got it. Everybody okay?
Yep.
You're okay with that?
Next?
Can we just go back, so, is the River City Regional Stadium financing, is it already still a real thing?
Yeah.
So we're still-
We actually meet for 10 minutes.
Really, and that's for what, replacing River City Stadium when it wears out, or what?
Progress reports on debt.
Finances and payback and all that.
Okay, so when that's paid off, though, then that would dissolve?
I would imagine it'll go away.
Does it get paid off?
Like soon.
Fairly shortly, right?
I think, yeah, somewhere in the twenties.
Do we have a reserve over there that, any, do we have a reserve over there that where any money comes back to the county?
We spin it. We called it back in hard times, I think.
We took that in 2009.
About a million two, wasn't it?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, it is.
Okay, SAFCA.
All right, so for SAFCA.
Supervisor Serna, you're alternate.
I'm good with my chief.
Okay. Supervisor Natoli?
Yep.
You're okay. Supervisor Peters?
I'm fine.
Supervisor Frost. And I would like to name Keaton Riley as my alternate.
Next would be the Sacramento County Disaster Commission, one-year terms.
Okay, it looks like this is another chair, vice-chair, and-
Rotation correct.
It's a no-meeting commission.
I know, I, so, we'll just do chair and vice-chair.
Got that. And next is the Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Supervisor, okay, if everybody's okay, we'll stay the same.
Okay. Sacramento County Public Facilities Financing Corporation, this is also a rotation of the chair and vice-chair.
What's the deal with this one? Nav?
It's not very active.
No, I know.
It's a couple of certificates of participation we have, we have to make annual reports back to you, and we have to name who the chair and the vice-chair every year on it.
Okay, but might sign a certificate now and then.
Might be a tax certificate that comes through that we gotta sign.
And we'll just move the chair to the president, CEO, and the vice-chair, the vice-president, and have the membership of all the others.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do the rotation there. Next is the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
And I'm good if everybody else is okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's also another correction, if we can just go back to the Mental Health Board. The, the letter needs to be corrected to match the- Okay. Table. Got it. There's a change. Okay, thank you. And then Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission, I'd just like to point out to the board that there is a correction on your actual spreadsheet. The alternate term expires and that, Serna is sitting in that seat. The Supervisor Peters, her term expires 12/31, so her seat is still active.
In 20.
And then, and 20, excuse me, and then Supervisor Frost, you are sitting as a member, and your term expires on 12/31/20. So the only action today is for Supervisor Serna's seat, he's sitting as an alternate.
Supervisor Serna.
I'm happy to serve as an alternate.
Okay.
And then I do have another correction for Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board, for Supervisor Serna's alternate, that is Karina Talamantes.
Right. Correct.
And then for Sacramento Regional Solid Waste Authority, chair is the alternate for this body.
Now, I, I had a question about this, is the chair the alternate by some kind of statute or rules, or is that just the customary?
It's customary.
Yeah, it's-
Yeah, because when we went to four members, we used to have five, and then they, when we reduced it, we said the chair would rotate as the alternate each year, so that's, to your point, customary.
But if you'd like to remain on it, you may.
Yeah, I would like to remain on it.
Okay.
So we'll just have all, all the membership on there.
And you're fine with that? Okay.
I'm fine being the alternate, yes.
Oh, you want to be the-
Yeah, you got that one.
Yeah, someone has to-
Be the alternate?
Yeah.
Who would like to be the alternate?
E.
Rochambeau, folks.
I, I-
That's fine, I was alternate this year.
Sometimes have a built-in conflict with state service.
We'll make Supervisor Serna the alternate, and welcome Supervisor Peters. Look forward to having you.
Got it. Sacramento Regional Transit District, it looks like Supervisor Serna's term is expiring, or has expired, in, end of December.
I'd like to continue serving.
Next, we have Sacramento Transportation Authority, and these, we need to reappoint for Serna, Kennedy, and Mr. Natoli.
So be it.
Renewed.
Can, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
All five of us serve by design?
Yeah.
So why do we have terms?
Yeah.
These terms are set to, they're probably set by your electoral day, I'm not sure, I have to double-check that.
It coincides with your term. Okay.
You can't rotate off if, if you want to.
Yeah.
Right. You're stuck.
Okay, and that concludes where you need to take any action for the highlighted items.
Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of these boards, I'm wondering if we could examine whether everyone needs to go, I mean, for instance, SECOG, if one of us is missing, the other two or one inherit the power of the votes of the other people. I mean, for instance, SWA, or, I'll just pick on them for the moment because it's up, but some others, can we look at whether we really have to have all five members or all four members attend?
Probably a question for the, of the bylaws of those respective organizations.
Organizations, yeah.
We could look at, so SECOG and SWA, those are the ones that you want us to look-
Now, SECOG already has a, a situation where if you don't come to a meeting, the other board members from your jurisdiction vote for you.
Like RT does, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wonder whether we could take, do you want me to tell you which ones I-
No, we can do it offline. We could do it offline, yeah. I got it.
Okay.
I mean, I think regional sanitation and, anyway, I, somebody from county council's office probably needs to look over those, those things.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the Delta Conservancy. That one, previously Jimmy Ye had served on, and then I've served on for the last few years, but the, there's sometimes a conflict with regional sanitation, although this year may be eliminated because we're going to meet probably more regularly, just once a month, and so some of that conflict will, but we had Don Thomas, who was a former county employee, retired, back as an inundant, a couple of days a week. I guess I wanted to see if, again, in the event that I, that I wasn't able to attend, unless you wanted to have a, a board alternate, a board member alternate.
You're talking with the Delta Protection Commission?
No, Delta Conservancy.
Conservancy.
It's, it's a-
It's not on here.
Yeah, it's on the last page.
I was looking for it on here.
It's on here, it's on the last page, and it's two, two lines down under STA.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, so I guess, first, I would, you know, say to my colleagues, if, if one of Yeah, so I guess, first, I would, you know, say to my colleagues, if one of you wanted to serve as alternate to that, it's, you know, it's one Wednesday a month, sometimes alternate every other month, but that, or, again, Don Thomas is very knowledgeable, again, with Delta, he certainly stays very much in tune, participates in a lot of conversations with our governmental relations, and obviously with water resources staff and others. So, I guess my question is, maybe this is for Tracy, that could he continue to serve that capacity if the board member wanted to be an alternate, or do we have to have, again, somebody else, you know, to be considered, again?
We'll work with Tracy on that.
Okay, all right. It'll be pretty simple, but maybe, is there anybody else that would like to serve as an alternate? You're all going to have the same conflict, though, on the regional sand day, that's the problem, so, yeah, that's where we get, we get messed up.
Let's see if we could get regional sand, so not everybody from the board of supervisors had to attend. It would make it easier.
We need you there, so...
Got all those dominos lined up. But at any rate, so I just want to begin, I certainly, I'm very pleased with Don Thomas. I think he's, you know, skilled, and we've all worked with him in one form or the other, so, but if that can't be, then we need to find someone to be a backup in the event that I couldn't attend, so, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. That finishes our ranks. Let's move on to 56.
Okay, for item 56, this is your nominations. You are continuing to January 29th, the Paratransit Incorporated Board of Directors, continuing to February 5th, the Kasumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and you're continuing to February 26th, Human Services Coordinating Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Sacramento County Youth Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, we have the Adult and Aging Commission. Mr. Kennedy?
Chiefs are recommending Casey Simon nominate, Marshall Wilkerson, I'm sorry, nominate is not the name. Marshall Wilkerson, Mayu Carlson, and Rachel Hoskins, and continue the rest to January 29th.
Okay. Carmichael Oldfut Hill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to January 29th.
Carmichael Recreation and Park District?
I'd like to nominate and appoint Jack Harrison. Request process be waived.
Second?
Unanimous vote. Cemetery Advisory Commission, Mr. Serna?
I'd like to nominate Catherine Olson.
Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Karen Partiak.
Okay, and then, Mr. Nattoli, I know you don't have applicants. Do you have a date? Do you want to continue?
Let's put it over for a month, and if I could, just on that, we had a board item scheduled, did it come back where we were going to allocate some funding for the commission's work, and it got dropped? Did that come back on our agenda? Late last year, it was, again, it was a $5,000 allocation to allow them to do some of their work, and I don't recall if that came back or not, so if you could check that, Mr.?
We'll check.
Okay, thanks. And we'll continue mine for a month, please.
Okay. And then Supervisor Kennedy?
One public representative. Chiefs recommend Emily Sunahara, and continue the rest till February 26th.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to January 29th.
And Mr. Nattoli?
Yes, we're doing an interview tomorrow, so, yeah, we'll put it over to 29th, please.
Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council?
Chiefs recommend Sarah Stricker, Susan Gilmore, Michael Hilton, and Patty Pacheco, and continue the rest to February 5th.
Disability Advisory Commission, Mr. Kennedy?
Continue till February 26th.
Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District, Mr. Nattoli?
Yes, thank the clerk's office for assisting with this last week. I'd like to move the nomination of the incumbent, Steve Weaver, and waive the process and appoint today if we could, so...
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Kennedy?
Chiefs recommend Edward Juarez Jr., and continue the rest to February 5th.
Okay. Law Library Board of Trustees, Mr. Kennedy?
Chief recommend June Coleman.
Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Mr. Kennedy?
Chief recommend Effie Ruggles, Elaine Ellers, and continue the rest to February 26th.
And then we have Mission Oaks Recreation Park District, Ms. Peters?
I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Rothberg.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna?
Please continue to February 26th.
And Ms. Peters?
I'd like to nominate LaShonda Barker, and continue the remainder to February 26th.
Public Health Advisory Board, Mr. Kennedy?
Chiefs recommend Philip Summers and Kathleen Wright.
Do you have a Jennifer Anderson?
Jennifer Anderson, too.
Yes, I do, I'm sorry. And Jennifer Anderson as well, thank you.
Recreation and Park Commission, Supervisor Serna?
Yes, I'd first like to thank Bob Ashton for his years of service on this commission, but I am going to nominate Lillian Allen, and request a waive the process.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And Supervisor Kennedy?
Continue to January 29th.
And Supervisor Frost?
Continue to January 29th.
And Mr. Nattoli?
Nominate the incumbent, Dan Gonzalez.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Supervisor Kennedy?
Chiefs recommend Ricky Townsend and Walter Winey Arsek, as well as Thomas Johnson, Paul Tanner, and continue the rest till February 26th.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board?
Excuse me, just, on that, if I could, Mr. Chair, the, we have an opening for a public student representative, and it was suggested that there might be interest by a youth commissioner, and maybe wanting to serve, that might be a good pool of folks to see, again, for the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, so it may be that we can work through the clerk's office to see if one of our youth commissioners might be interested in that public student representative on the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great.
Okay. Where are we? Sacramento Housing, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission?
County Mental Health Board.
Oh, sorry, guys. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Mr. Serna?
I'd like to reappoint Maria Padeo Castro.
Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to January 29th.
Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to January 29th.
And Mr. Nattoli?
Likewise.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Serna?
Please, I'm sorry.
No, I'd like to reappoint Cecily Nunley.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Please continue to February 26th.
Sylvan Cemetery District, Supervisor Frost?
I'd like to reappoint Gene Duncan, James Montiten, Tanya Wagner.
Okay, and this concludes your nominations.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Gill?
Nope, closed session.
All right, it's going to be a short closed session, or?
I believe so.
Okay. Then we will recess to closed session.
They're all like this, Tracy.